Okay. Welcome to the work session for November sixteenth, two thousand twenty. Please stand for the Fledge of Allegiance. Fledge of Allegiance.
To the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic. For which it stands.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation. Under God.
Indivisible.
Indivisible.
With liberty.
With liberty.
Justice for all.
Okay, Grace, roll call, please.
Councilman Corin.
Present.
Councilwoman Rested.
Present.
Councilwoman Hariman.
Present.
Councilwoman Friedman.
Present.
Councilman Burns.
Present.
Councilman Strong.
Present.
President Scanlon.
Present.
Okay, that's all seven here.
Chief Agelston, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Mr. President and Chief.
Yeah.
May I interrupt just for one second before we begin? We have online with us Maggie Redden. Maggie's a new attorney in our office. I just wanted to let everybody know that she was listening in. There she is.
Hello.
Hi Maggie.
Hi Maggie.
Hi Maggie.
I told her I really only turn my camera on when I'm speaking, so we'll jump off. Chief, I apologize for interrupting. I just wanted to introduce Maggie to everybody. All right.
Nice to meet everyone.
Chief, tell us about RL twenty dash two one six, please.
Okay, it's a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Frito Lay for confined space rescue. We've had a contract with them since two thousand eight. We have a confined rescue team. Confined space rescue team in the fire department. And they have a. We've had a series of three-year contracts with them. And we're looking to initiate another three-year contract with them.
Questions or comments on this?
I have a question.
Hello, Mr. Burns.
Hi, Chief. What does that mean, a confined space thing?
It's. When you, when you are, when you go into a confined space, it's basically a pipe. With Frito Lay, it could be a tank, you know, they have to go in and clean the tanks and whatnot. So when you enter a confined space, you have to have somebody who can come and get you. It's a, it's a required.
Okay, all right, thanks.
We do it at the sewage treatment plant also.
Thanks.
This is an annual deal, right, Chief?
Yes, this was a three-year contract that's expiring at the end of the month, and we're looking for another three-year contract, same terms.
Okay, great. Other questions on RL twenty dash two one six? Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Chief Carson, tell us about RL twenty dash two one seven, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. So, the first one, twenty dash two one seven, I'm asking for this to be expedited. Basically, what happened was, we had two contracts with Chow. Well, Bingham County Council churches through their Chow program to provide additional funding for their own program, as well as provide funding for assistance to various church kitchens in the area. And due to either a miscommunication or misunderstanding, their original contracts only had food as an eligible line item. And it's turned out it needs to be food and supplies, especially with COVID, due to the need for napkins, plates, to-go containers, bags, those kinds of things. And since the current contracts explicitly state food, we need to have just that minor adjustment to their contracts to allow them to to reimburse the churches, as well as their own program for additional supplies related, all related to food, but non-food type supplies.
Questions or comments? On RL twenty two one seven?
This is Councilwoman Riley. I have a question. How are you, Steve?
I'm doing all right. How are you doing?
Good, good. We, we hope we can jump over to the comment period if it's still ongoing. Regarding this resolution, this is the resolution specifically regarding the press conference the mayor held with various pastors in the city, correct?
I, I don't know exactly what press conferences were done. That's definitely a question for the mayor. Is there anything specifically from what was said at that press conference that I might be able to answer?
Well, I, I'm making sure, because there was a line item related to that expenditure. So I'm just clarifying, if this is the same line item, do you, are you familiar? Where we'd be supporting various churches that are, some were part of Chow, I think maybe all of them were, but is that?
This is Jared. Yes, that was the, this was the programmatic aspect of that announcement with some of the pastors to support, you know, the immediate food and supply needs. That's correct.
Okay, so we're amending it so we can make sure we're able to allocate those resources that were discussed at that time. Okay, thank you.
Other questions on twenty dash two one seven? Okay, Steve, tell us about twenty dash two one eight, please.
So this is our standard annual agreement with the BLDC to fund a portion of their salary expenses out of CDVG. It's less this year than last year due to the reduced number of people in that department. This contract with them is, is dependent on the BLDC itself also authorizing acceptance of this agreement. We will be making an amendment slightly to this agreement from previous years to include some qualifications on the amount of money they're able to keep in the RL account, but other than that, the agreement would pretty much be the same.
Questions on RL twenty dash two one eight?
For those that. This is Councilwoman Riley. Can, for those of, those of our public that may be watching, can you explain the BLDC? The acronym?
It stands for Binghamton Local Development Corporation. It's a nonprofit tied to the city. That, it is a separate entity, but it's sort of interconnected with the city itself. They provide loans and assistance to businesses in the city of Binghamton. The CDVG aspect is to encourage businesses, loans to lower-income-owned businesses, or even businesses that hire lower-income people or unemployed people. And as well as providing assistance to businesses in many parts of the area that have a, just providing a service to a lower-income area.
Thank you for that.
Other questions, RL twenty two one eight? All right, Steve, tell us about RL twenty two nine, please.
So after we did everything we needed to do with our last action plan, HUD came back to us. I included a letter from them to the city, both myself and the mayor. They reduced our overall entitlement grant due to some sort of typo or calculating error. The total amount lost between, well, CDVG is losing a little over $200 in homes. I believe it's losing less than 100. But due to a change, we then have, we thus have to reduce the revenue stream for those two entitlement grants, as well as some funding item. I chose the two funding items that have, that generate programming income, because that seemed like it would be the least disturbed. And the mayor's office seems to be okay with that. So basically, it's adjusting the annual action plan, which we submitted back in July, due to a miscalculation on HUD side.
Questions or comments? All right, Steve, tell us about RL twenty dash two two zero, please.
RL two two zero is changing an existing agreement that we have with Bingham County Council of Churches through the BLDC's loan program. Before, they were receiving revolving loan funding to $150,000 to renovate the grocery store at the 435 State Street. That, we're switching that to a UDAG funding source to, to help reduce some of the regulatory oversight of that. So that they're able to bookfill that contract. It is also like the agreement has to be approved by the BLDC board itself.
Questions or comments?
This is Councilwoman Riley.
Let's go to Councilwoman.
Yeah, so again, acronyms, UDAG. What is UDAG?
You know, I'm not actually sure. That's an older grant line, I believe originally funded by HUD, but not even monitored anymore. The BLDC has an amount of UDAG money they've been using for loans when they need to provide assistance with less regulatory oversight than the CDVG RL, which is revolving loan account. I'm actually not sure what UDAG stands for.
This is Jared again. UDAG stands for Urban Development Action Grant, and it's a, it's an older grant from HUD that had less restrictions than CDVG.
And is this a revolving fund source, or has it been eliminated since? Jared?
I can, I can answer that, that there is no more UDAG grant from HUD. HUD doesn't even, doesn't even monitor it anymore. It is no longer existing as a, as an entitlement grant or as a, as a applied-for grant anymore.
Thank you.
Any other questions, RL one twenty dash, RL twenty dash two two zero? Thank you, Mr. Carson.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Mr. Persol, are you on the line?
Yes, sir.
All right, tell us about RL twenty dash two two one, please.
The first RL tonight is for a spare DN feed pump. We have four of them at the facility that are in continual use, and there was no plan or provision to give us a spare pump in case one of those has to be taken down for repair or for routine maintenance. So we're asking for a transfer of $95,000 from the capital contingency to a new capital line that would have to be set up by the controller.
So again, Charles, this is not replacing one, this is just an extra one, correct?
This is an extra. Yeah, we have no spare, and there's four of them that are in service. So the danger is if one of those fails, we would have to cut flow.
So having taken a tour of that plant, where are these located, these pumps? Mr. Persol, do you know?
The CN cells are the big concrete that are closest to Vestal Road. Behind them are the DN cells, which is denitrification, and those pumps are between those large cells and the smaller DN cells.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for that. Questions on RL twenty dash two two one, please?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
That's Councilwoman, go ahead.
All right, thanks. Hi, Charlie, how are you?
Oh, good.
So is it standard to have an extra pump just in case?
Yes.
Is this something that we've had? Okay, and then what happened to the last spare one? Is it now being used?
This is something we have not had a spare for, because this is the new process. Typically, we do keep something as a spare for the normal pumps for this reason. A lot of them are common and interchangeable. These are not. Flight pumps are fairly specialized, and there's a long lead time to get them in. So if one were to fail, it would take months to get a replacement ordered and in place. So we want to do it now in the event that we're anticipating maintenance and possible failure.
I see. And it's necessary for all of the pumps to be operating at the same time?
We're using them all now in high-water events. At times, we may not be needing all four of them, but, you know, it's weather-dependent, and right now, they are all being used periodically. In a given day.
Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
In a given day, we would typically run all of them sometime. Sometimes we run all of them all the time. One of those Lincoln-type situations.
Okay, so it's fair to say that at, at some point, all four are in operation? And if one of them were to fail, it would be bad news, let's say.
Difficult. Not necessarily catastrophic, but it would be very difficult.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other questions on RL twenty dash two two one? Mr. Persol, tell us about RL twenty dash two two two, please.
The second one is for lab supplies. We're asking for $3,000 transferred out of the chemicals line to be applied to the laboratory supplies. We're doing additional testing. This was anticipated. We have new processes, and we're actually checking to make sure that the processes are functional. So now we have a fully-staffed lab, and we're able to process a lot of our own work internally, which is good news. And we do anticipate right now that line has some money left in it, but we're talking to the lab director. By the end of the year, she has things she wants to be able to do. We'll need 3,000 additional.
Okay, questions or comments on RL twenty dash two two two?
This is Councilwoman Riley. I just have a comment. So again, many of us toured the facility, and we're appreciative of the time you guys spent. It afforded us the opportunity to see that new lab space and understand the work that goes into testing the samples, which is even more critical, so.
It's a wonderful space compared to what they had before there. So that's a wonderful thing. They have a nice, new, shiny lab that can be utilized.
Yes, I think we were, I can say we were all impressed. I see Sophia nodding as well. So we definitely understand the importance, and, and again, appreciate you guys giving us that tour. So thank you.
I will pass the word in.
Other questions on twenty dash two two two? Thank you, Mr. Persol.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Jared Crim, tell us about RL twenty dash two one three, please.
Good evening. This is a request for legislation to authorize the lease of two vacant properties that were previously the site of a FEMA buyout demolition for flood hazard mitigation to support the creation of a Vines Community Garden, which is a partnership between Metro Interfaith, which operates the housing facility across the street from this vacant land, and Vines. This is very similar to the arrangement that's been made on other city property with Vines. They are able to not purchase because of FEMA deed restrictions, but lease formerly FEMA-d demolished floodplain properties and construct a community gardens, which support local sustainable food systems and help beautify formerly vacant areas. So all of the proposed development, which has raised beds, will be within the FEMA guidelines for future use of floodplain demolished properties. And will be in just kind of another node for Vines on the south side of Binghamton to support their overall efforts with their urban farm downtown, as well as hosts of other community gardens. So this would be, you know, a $1 a year lease with, to Metro for them to have an urban farm, community garden there on, on those sites. The sites are otherwise really unbuildable, not even a parking lot could go on there, as it was a FEMA floodplain demo. So it's really either the status quo, which is just a vacant lot right now, or this opportunity for a community garden as Vines grows and expands. I did send the council tonight, just kind of in writing, the overview of the new street community garden, which Metro is, is proposing. It has a lot more details than what I discuss right now.
Questions on twenty dash two one three, please? Jared, tell us about twenty dash two two three, please.
I think Chuck is going to, to come in. He has more specifics on this. But this is essentially a, an RL to provide a one-time amnesty program to assist in parking ticket fine collections. This is being done in conjunction with a shift in the city's vendor for parking ticket collections. The last amnesty program, this, this kind of was done about five years ago. I can have Chuck go into further details regarding the, the change in firms and why we want to do this now. Go ahead, Chuck.
Okay, Jared. To be fairly quick, we went through an RFP process earlier this summer and decided to make a switch on the vendors that take care of our parking tickets. What that means is every time we issue a parking ticket, we put those tickets into a third-party system. That company sends out collection bills and collects the money for us, although people can pay it in here. It all goes into their system. They get paid off of the amount of money that gets collected. They do all the work for the most part. When we just changed over the system at the end of October, so realistically, we haven't sent out a whole lot of delinquent letters for the months of September, October, November yet. And the vendor made a strong recommendation to us, before we start sending out delinquent notices and start collecting some of those funds, and then maybe do an amnesty program early next year. He recommended we do the amnesty program right now. It's probably not the best time of December, but it would be problematic for a lot of people that would pay tickets between now and, say, we did this in March, and then came out with an amnesty program in March or April, they'd be pretty upset. So the right time to really do this, before we start getting involved in everything, is to do it in December. And besides that part of it, it's going to help us this year with hopefully collecting money. All of our revenues are down, so this hopefully will help bring in some additional revenue that we may not have expected three months ago.
And Chuck, to confirm, the amnesty relates to the late fees and penalties on the tickets. The tickets themselves remain the same price, but the city's not looking to collect those extra fees, right?
That's what we're giving up in this amnesty program. So if the bill is $20, the normal charge, the violation is $20, then we have fees on top of that at 20. We're eliminating those fees and interest penalties to bring it back down to 20, and hopefully we collect all that. We, we also have to pay any New York State surcharges. We can't eliminate any of them, and I think if you park in a handicap parking spot, there's a New York State surcharge of like $40. We can't eliminate that.
Chuck, any idea how much is, how many, how much out there are late parking tickets? Is there a sense of that?
Yes, there's over a half million dollars. There's, there's constantly over a half million. It's usually between a half million and a million dollars.
Is that old, old money, Chuck, a lot of it?
Yes, they, they go back, I think, five, six years.
Okay.
I have a question.
Other questions? Yes, go ahead.
Yeah. So how do we advertise that?
Well, number one thing we're going to do is send out letters to everyone that's on the list that owes us money. Okay, take care of doing that. That'll be the first one. I'm sure the mayor will probably make a comment in the paper or something between now and the end of the month.
Joe, assuming city council approves, we do a press release on it to let people know, make them aware. Is there a statute of limitations on a traffic ticket?
Actually, I don't believe there is. Ken, are you out there?
I am here. Eventually, yes, but if anybody would like to talk about the enforcement of traffic tickets offline, please give me a call or email me.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just wondering in the, in the press release or whatever, to say that, because people might think, I thought I had one of the town tickets, and it was 10 years old or something. I don't even remember getting the ticket. I couldn't, I thought, you know, there's no statute of limitations on this, and I just paid it this year. So, and I saw, you know, people might, might want to know, we might want to let them know that there is no statute of limitations on your ticket. So if you've got one, and it's old, you should come in. You know what I mean? Anyway, it's just.
Yes, we can do that.
Is there any way that? Chuck, do we, or Jared or Ken, do we send out letters to people periodically that have exonerating parking tickets out there?
Yes, we do. In our old system, they stopped after three months, okay? Sending it out, this new firm that we go to does it in a different avenue, and I can't remember it right off the top of my head, but I believe it will be more effective. They, they make their money by collecting money. So if they don't collect any money, they don't get paid. And it's to their benefit to go out and collect this, and this firm seems to be more aggressive in their approach.
Okay.
Councilwoman Riley. Okay, so if we were to ask the firm that we affiliated with to go back and send a number of mailed notices out to everyone that you talk about back five years, would we, the city, then incur additional costs for that mail-out?
No.
No?
He's going to do that, Councilwoman Riley. He's going to go after everybody that's out there.
Okay, and then what is the window in terms of the proposed amnesty period?
We're saying every ticket that was issued before, the day before Thanksgiving and prior, and they all have to be paid before December 31st.
Okay. So then the notification via snail mail will go out as soon as this is approved?
As soon as you approve this, we'll be getting the letters out. It's going to take us some time to get the letters, get them all organized, and get them out, out of his office. And you can pay it either in the city of Binghamton by mailing it in, or through a web portal.
That's why we're expediting this on Wednesday.
Yes, we like to expedite. This is something that's really came about in the last week, and we actually finally got everything finalized on, I believe it was Friday morning. So we had to get all the paperwork documented out to you.
Hey, other questions on RL twenty dash two two three?
This is Councilwoman Friedman. Hi, Chuck, how are you?
Very good.
Okay, so I just, I want to make sure I'm understanding this correctly, so this is more of a clarification question. But this, to, to make sure I'm understanding this, this amnesty program is arising because we are switching third-party vendors that issue the, the parking ticket collections, is that correct?
I wouldn't say that's the only reason it's arising.
Okay.
It's something that we would have probably done next year, okay, but the timing of it makes more sense to do it right now.
Okay, so what, um, what then prompted this? Like, why? Why are we deciding to do this now rather than next year, or why haven't we done it in the past? Like, what is it about this time right now that makes it ideal?
Because we have not really done a, in the process of changing over, we have not sent out a lot of delinquent notices to people in the last couple of months. So if we start blasting that out in December, and people start paying it in December, January, February, and we then do an amnesty program in April, those people that paid those bills are going to be pretty upset.
Okay, that makes sense, all right.
And, and Councilwoman, this is actually the third time we've done an amnesty in the city that I'm, I'm aware of. Every five or six years or so, or, you know, we do this, to try to clean up the books and raise some additional funds.
We've done it 2012 or 11, 2015, and 2020.
Okay, and then, since there's no statute of limitations on the parking tickets, each, would, would each amnesty program clear, like, we would, since we've done this three times, then each amnesty program would theoretically clear the books up all the way through, you said the first one was 2011?
Yes, it was either 2011 or 2012.
Okay, so that's almost a decade of amnesty programs.
And each one's just for a limited period of time.
Okay.
And we don't clear up all the books. Let me make that clear. We're going to get more money than we normally do, but we're not going to clear the books, okay?
Okay. Okay, thank you for the clarification.
Other questions on RL twenty dash two two three, please? All right, thanks, Chuck. Thanks, Jared.
Tom, before you take off, I'm, I'm going to get out of here. Can I just make one comment? You, you heard Charlie talking. You heard Charlie talking about spare parts and buying that motor. I want you all to be aware that in this project that we're doing, every manufacturer is leaving parts over there, spare parts that they think they should have, okay? It's probably in the tune of somewhere between a million and $2, million and $2 million worth of spare parts. I'm working on getting that inventory, okay, so that we have that. But I just want you to be aware of that. There's lots of money tied up in spare parts because it is important to them that if a machine goes down, they have something to replace it with and get it up and running very quickly.
Okay, great Chuck. Thank you very much for that clarification. Appreciate it.
Mr. President, hey Chuck, Chuck, before you leave, can I just remind people, do we want to clear up the mayor's salary for the 2022 to 2025 term? Not tonight, but just to remind you, this is something that needs to be done.
That's not on the agenda, though.
I understand.
Listen, Councilwoman Riley, calm down. We will put it on the agenda for the next work session.
I reminded people a few times and it keeps not being put on the agenda.
All right, great. Make sure this gets on the agenda for next Monday's work session, please. You know, the next work session.
Thank you.
All right, RL 20-224 is moving, I got lost here for a second. So it's moving the business meeting to six o'clock to coincide with the work session. So we're consistent on that. We talked about it before. Any questions or comments on this before we vote on it on Wednesday? No questions or comments? All right. And Grace, tell us about 20-215, please.
Okay, RL 20-215 is, let me look at this. This is a retention schedule that we are required by New York State to adopt. So it's just, you know, the time period for which certain documents have to be kept. And so New York State is requiring us to adopt the new LGS statute one retention schedule.
Questions or comments on 20-215, please?
Yes, this is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Thank you. So just to clarify, we are already using a retention disposition schedule. However, this is coming down from New York State that it's being updated. Is that correct?
Yes, basically, New York State requires us to have one. And every, you know, so often they update it and require us to adopt the new one. I think the last one was back in 2009, so it's been about 11 years since it's been updated.
And actually, I'm sorry, and actually, our code says that we use the schedule as may be updated from time to time by New York State. But this is a fairly major update, which is why they're asking for legislative approval again.
Okay, do you happen to know what the difference is in the schedule from what it is now to what the new schedule calls for?
I, I can send you guys on a link. The schedule is 411 pages long.
Whoa, okay.
I don't have all the answers to that, what's different and what's not different. It's being that it is so long. We're going to go, you and I will go through that and figure out.
I tried to take a very quick look at it. I didn't see any major differences in the normal things. You know, the things that are kind of day-to-day, the things that you have to keep like deeds and easements, the things that are usually seven years. But as Grace says, it's over 400 pages long.
Right, okay. I was, I was just curious. All right, thank you.
Other questions on 20-215? All right, thank you, Grace. No pennies left, let's, so let's go back and revisit what Mr. Frank just mentioned. We don't have to decide tonight, obviously, on the mayor's salary for 2021, but let's, 2022, I guess. Let's go back and, if there's any discussion out there, I'd like to hear it right now, thoughts on the mayor's salary.
This, this is Councilwoman Riley.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Yes, the reason I'm asking that we adhere to the agenda because we, that allows us time to go and research the previous changes so that we can make an informed decision and bring forth our question. I was not prepared to discuss it. I didn't even know that, again, it was going to be discussed. So for all intents and purposes, I'm glad Mr. Frank brought it up. But again, I would like time to research.
Okay, I just, I said this to everybody, it's part of the package that I sent to everybody with the budget. We talked about it during the budget that it's something that was going to be needed to be done before the end of the year. I understand it's not on the agenda, right? And my point is, I just want people to be aware of it. I want to make sure people know that it needs to be done, okay? And I'm trying to find out if people have any questions and are there concerns? But it's something that really needs to be accomplished and it should be done, you know, in December.
I can put that on the agenda for the visit, the work session for the first week of summer.
But everybody has the proposed legislation in the package that I sent you with the budget schedule. Like, the exact legislation is part of that package.
Right, which we got there, Ken. So again, Councilwoman Riley, if you're not ready to discuss it, that's fine. I'm asking anybody else to have any questions, any thoughts, any concerns?
This is Councilwoman Friedman.
Yes.
Thank you. So I, I just, I would like to echo what Councilwoman Riley said. I wasn't, I read the, all of the budget documents during the budget sessions, but I don't have that ready to, to reference at the moment. But I, so having said that, I do have to, you know, refresh my memory. But what, didn't we approve the mayor's salary as part of the budget?
Correct. What we're trying to do here is that rather than having council approve the mayor's salary every year as part of the budget where it becomes an issue, right? You approve the mayor's salary for the next term. So in this case, it would be 22, 23, 24, 25, and you do it a year before there's an election. So that way, it doesn't become a political football. It's not an issue. Whoever's running for mayor, they know what the salary is going to be before they run for mayor. It takes the politics out of it and gets it done, so you're not doing this on an annual basis.
I see, and in the past, it was on an annual basis every year with the entire city of Binghamton budget?
No, and not only that, it was worse than that because the mayor's salary for a number of years was never changed. It fell so far behind that eventually, city council decided to increase it by 3% a year until it reached a certain point, but it reached that point during the middle of a term. But then suddenly, you were deciding on a mayor's salary, why they're actually sitting in office in the exact same manner that you decided on your salaries in advance, right? The suggestion is you do the same for the mayor's salary.
I see, okay. And so then, next work session, when we do have this discussion more in depth, we should, all of the information that we'll need can be referenced in those documents that you sent out prior to the budget hearings?
What's in there is the proposed legislation. And it was actually given to council last year as well, but they wanted this council to do it because I said it needed to be done in 2020. What's important, and for what you all to decide that I have nothing to do with, is what's that salary going to be?
Right, okay.
Right, that I have no input on. I'm just trying to create the, the structure so that we know what the salary is going to be from term to term, not only for the mayor, but for future city councils.
Right, okay. Yeah, I look forward to having this discussion once I've refreshed my memory with, with all of those documents. But thank you for that information, Ken. I appreciate it.
Okay, again, we're not deciding anything tonight. I would ask again, I understand, I've heard from Councilwoman Riley, I've heard from Councilwoman Friedman. If anybody wanted to discuss anything about the mayor's salary, we can start the talks now. We're not deciding anything. You still have time to go back and refresh yourself. But if there's anything anybody wants to start the conversation, we can tonight. If you, if you do have something to say, please go.
This is Councilwoman Riley. There's a public hearing happening at the same time regarding CDBG funding. And again, the reason we, I'm kind of leaning to the agenda is because we have to prioritize how we structure and do our gathering. So if we are to have a conversation now, why would we have a conversation again on Monday where it's officially on the agenda?
Councilwoman Riley, I don't think, yeah, Councilwoman Riley, it doesn't need to be on the agenda for me to decide to discuss something or for me to throw that out there. So if you don't want to add to the discussion, it's fine. Maybe there won't be a discussion. But it's fine because you certainly, we're, we're not going to vote on anything. We're going to decide hopefully two weeks from now, if not, we'll get it to the next work session. But all I'm throwing out there again, if anybody has any comments to start the conversation, any questions for Ken? Or anything of that nature, please say now, otherwise we're not deciding anything. Angela, so I'm not sure what the problem is.
The specific discussion is going to be, which I didn't expect anybody to talk about tonight, is what should that salary be? That's something that city council has to figure out. But the structure is something that I've raised with you a number of times. And I think that what council president is asking, does anybody have any questions about the structure? So that when we do discuss this at the next meeting, everybody knows what the structure is. Everybody knows what we're trying to accomplish, and then you can decide what the salary should be.
I have a, I have a question. Is it possible, before we have the discussion on Monday, Ken, is it, do you, is it up to us to get this information or would you have it? But like, the average salary of a mayor in the United States of a budget of our size?
We can find that. I think that we've done that research from other municipalities in the past. I'm sure between now and two weeks from now, we can get that information for you.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody have any other questions for Ken regarding the mayor's salary?
And again, I'm not trying to put, the salary is up to you. What I'm trying is the structure. And that's what I'm really asking. Does anybody have any thoughts or objections or concerns about the structure? Doing it in advance of the election and setting it for the full term? Okay.
All right, so if, all right, we'll move on from that. Does anybody have anything else I have to discuss before we adjourn the meeting? All right, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move, Councilwoman Riley.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned. Thank you, everybody.